5.15. Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, approve the award of bid number 25-0693 for 2024 Levy Patrol Road Gravel Repair Project in Upper Lake, California between Lake County Watershed Protection District and Coleman Construction LLC in the amount of $163,812.64 and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement. And Vice Chair Crandall, you pulled this item.
Yes, so this project is, of course, it's highly needed. It's been brought up in the town hall, West Region Town Hall, for quite some time. Excited to see it come to the board. But there's also been some concerns by the Habemetal tribal historic preservation officer about some discussion. And I think a lot of this is just having, just the new communicate, communication situation with our new director and then it coming from the previous Water Resources Director. And so trying to get on the same page here with that. And I know that there's been some emails that I've received about concerns with specifications for the plan of what's going on so that the tribe can determine what and who they need for monitoring and then also a plan for the cultural resources if found, where they would go from there. And I think there might be something else if I'm missing it. I think Mr. Gary's here, he can explain some of the concerns. But I think, I mean, I really feel like we can move forward and address some of these concerns. I really would like to see this happen for the Upper Lake community, but also for the Upper Lake Tribe to have their concerns met as well. It's very important to me. So I just wanted to pull it and see if we can have that discussion.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? I want to make sure and get a better understanding maybe of some of the concerns if Mr. Gary would like to come up and talk.
How could they might all cut the camp till we can Robert Gary. How are you today? My name is Robert Gary. I'm the Director of Cultural Resources and the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Habemetal Puma of Upper Lake. We were talking about the levy maintenance projects, I think, that are, you know, taken on by, you know, the Water Resources Department here. I got an informal email about a project where the initial details were, well, not details, but the initial work for it was to remove sediment for flood control. And so, and that was in, that was actually on June 5th. At that same, on the same day, I requested more details. The email that I got was asking for, to set up, you know, to, we want to, you know, talk about having a monitor out there on site. I asked for more details because I needed to know like what all, you know, was going to take place during this project, what was going to happen. I didn't get any details as far as with what I was requesting. I was also told that there was a categorical exemption for this project that was issued by Fish and Wildlife back in 2022. I asked for a copy of that. I got that, reviewed it, did some research with that. So in this categorical exemption, and mind you, CEQA AB 52 was actually passed in 2014 with the, with adding another category for tribal cultural resources to be assessed in a sequent, in a CEQA assessment for any project. And so I researched a categorical exemption. Under this categorical exemption, there were 22 waterways that were a part of this project where this levy maintenance was going to happen. After, you know, looking at, you know, tribal cultural resources, archaeological resources that are registered with the state, out of the 22, 21, 21 of those waterways, which ranged from all the way up, um, the north part of the Clear Lake, in Clear Lake, all the way down to, to, two waterways, I believe, that down in Middletown. Out of the 22, 21 of them actually went through prehistoric sites or had sites that were literally on the banks of these waterways. I had this conversation with the issuing agency, which was Fish and Wildlife, about those concerns. They said that they needed to, you know, look at and review that categorical exemption determination for the fact that it was missing a lot with that assessment. And so that's kind of like in the process now. I initially got, like I said, an informal notification. It was just an email that there was this project that was coming down and they wanted to work out monitors from, you know, Lake County Water Resources. Not getting the details, not getting specifics to, you know, some of the things I, you know, addressed my concerns. I also inquired about tribal consultation. After we were told about the categorical exemption, I informed the Water Resources Department that there are exceptions to the exemptions for CEQA when tribal cultural resources, you know, are, are concerned. And those are what I brought. So June 5th is when I inquired about tribal consultation. I didn't get anything back from Water Resources until August 6th, wanting to, to schedule a tribal consultation. In that consultation, we had not just Water Resources there. We also had Fish and Wildlife who issued the permit that was there. We also had Department of Water Resources that were there. At this consultation, Fish and Wildlife informed everyone that because there were some things that were missed in the initial assessment for that categorical exemption, that they wanted to review it. That we also brought to the table concerns for known TCRs that were going to be impacted by this project. We wanted to get more details, more information because up from June all the way until then, we didn't get specifics. And so our concern was that, first of all, that there were too many holes in this whole, you know, project and, and informing, I think of, you know, the Water Resource Department that all the tribes would have to really kind of take a look at this as well because it's the categorical exemption determination really wasn't adequate. These were known tribal cultural resources that were going to be impacted. The tribe is not against, you know, levy repair or levy maintenance. You know, Habemetal is definitely going to benefit from that as well, but it shouldn't be at the tribe's tribal, tribal cultural resources. And so we just wanted to mitigate and make sure that there was a plan set in place. So as of August, we started with ongoing consultation regarding this. We still are in consultation, according to the tribe, because there was no mitigation measures that were set up. We're still waiting for the review of the Fish and Wildlife to the categorical exemption from, and that consultation was on August 27th. On August 30th, there was a submission to the planning department here for a categorical exemption, which we didn't, was unbeknownst or to us, we didn't know anything about that and we didn't understand why if it already had a categorical exemption. The only thing that I can come to is that Fish and Wildlife stated that there was possibility that it wouldn't meet the requirements for a categorical exemption because of some of the things that were being brought to the table. And so I spoke with the planner here at Lake County. She was unaware or wasn't informed by Water Resources that we were in current consultation. So she actually retracted the notice of intent for exemption. She redacted that or retract that. So right now, she's saying, or planning department is saying, okay, we're going to let you guys figure this out because there's already been one that's established through consultation. There should be some kind of mitigation measures to address the impacts of tribal cultural resources. So through this project, there's going to be impacts to slope deterioration that has happened. I've asked for details of like, what does that entail? What does that look like? What's going to be the ground disturbance that's going to happen with that? There's also going to be scarification of the levies. I asked for any kind of historical information of how those levies were, were created. I haven't gotten those, that information yet. And then just known that because of those waterways and waterways move, they're literally going to go and the erosion that happens with cultural resources, most of those resources are going to be in the sediment. So that's a big concern for us. So to be able to make sure that we have a plan, I asked if there was going to be an archaeologist or a CRM firm that's going to be contracted if anything's found. Where can we put these as, as far as a reburial site? Those forms can only be submitted by an archaeologist. I was informed that no, there was no archaeologist that was going to be contracted through this. I see, I, I seen on June 5th of this year, June 5th to June 6th, the Water Resource Department put out a notice for bid, which was, I believe, in the amount of 180, over 180 something thousand specifically for this project for bid. And then I see for bid today, the award for it is 160, over 160. There's an amount remaining of 17, over 17,000. In consultation and on-site visit, we were, you know, the tribe was told, well, we have $2,000 this for you. And I said, well, without the details, I really can't tell you how long our monitor will be out there. 2,000 might be more than what I need. 2,000 might be less. I don't know. Without the details, I can't determine where we need to be and where we don't need to be. And those were some of the conversations that we've been kind of dealing with as far as getting good communication and getting the things that we're asking for to make sure that, you know, we have a detailed plan. If we find items, where are they going to go? If there's, you know, the ripping and the things, the ripping and the slope deterioration because it's changed from the very first email that I received, it was, there was going to be sediment removal. From what I understand, now there's no sediment removal, but there is ground disturbance activities that are going to happen. And so with those ground disturbance activities, we just, you know, we, we requested that, hey, we want to make sure that we have somebody on site. There's not going to be an archaeologist that's there from what I was, have been told so far. There's no archaeologist on site, TCRs that are there, there's no one there to move them, there's no one there to assess it, there's no one there to make sure that, you know, there's a reburial spot for the items. The tribes don't like taking those things back home. If we can put them back where we got them or place them near a place where, you know, they're, they're, that they've been discovered, that's great for us, right? But if not, then, you know, there's has to be some, but there has to be mitigation. And so these are the concerns that we've been having from June 5th. Like I said, asking about tribal consultation in June 5th, it shouldn't take all the way from June 5th to June, or August 6th to get an answer back for consultation. Because it's exempt, that doesn't mean best practices wise to be able to address that, those concerns with the tribe if the tribe has concerns. We brought that to the August 27th consultation. We're currently in consultation. I'm not sure, the last email that I got, the VRF, which is a verification request form that needs to be filled out and submitted to Fish and Wildlife before any work can happen from on, on August, or some, I'm sorry, September 3rd, I was informed that that still hasn't been done. So I understand it's timely. I understand maintenance, levy maintenance is important. It's important to our community, community as well, but there also is the protection and preservation of the tribe's cultural resources. And so that's why, you know, we're here today.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask for Water Resources now that we have an understanding here of what the concerns are, if you can provide some response.
So it's Pawanu Padia, I'm the new Water Resources Director here. So I will say like, I'm like all for it, like as far as the tribal culture resources is concerned, like I totally understand that. But I think what Robert has mentioned here is like, is he's mixing up like multiple projects which we have in our department. So which is like basically the gravel removal as well as the levy maintenance. So these are like two separate works in itself. I think all the communication we have regarding the levy maintenance happened in, in or after July. So June and everything that is like gravel removal, which might be more concerned, concern regarding as far as the tribal culture resources is concerned. But as far as this levy maintenance project goes, it's basically about bringing some more gravel and like putting on top of the existing levies. So it's like building up from there. And as far as our CEQA and other thing goes, that's why we are like exempt for it. Like I'm still learning more about projects, so maybe I can't say like 100% what exactly is there, but as far as like I understand it, so we have like an exemption for the reason that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, they have already evaluated these impacts to the tribal culture resources. And they have determined through their process that there is no impact or no significant impact to the tribal culture resources. And if it's otherwise, so I think that's the discussion between the agency which has given us, which is the Fish and Wildlife, that exemption. And that process, I don't know, like it seems to be much more longer or like lengthier than the one which we have because we are trying to get this project done because I understand that it's been going on or like for the community for the last couple of years. And we do have a timeline on that, like October 15, I believe, is a hard timeline, like where we can't work beyond that. So I'm trying to address, like we even, even though we are exempt, we do have a budget for like culture monitoring and $2,000, I believe, was put in, in the initial planning phase. And if we need more, probably we can come up with like a different sources or somewhere we can find it out. So, so that's why I think right now, what we have done is like we separated our project. We are only doing the levy maintenance, nothing about the gravel removal. So, and whatever information we have at our office has been provided to Mr. Gary. So I don't know if we have anything more than what has already been provided. And as far as the specific detail of the project goes, that's up to the contractor, like how, which equipment he gonna use, like how he gonna approach it. But I think we can ask him that kind of information as well, once the project is awarded. And as far as the scale of project goes, because it's a relatively smaller project compared to like as far as construction goes, so I think for mostly these type of projects, there is not like a very detailed planning of what gonna, I think as far as the contractor gets that project, we can ask him more specific information on day-to-day basis.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so just for clarification, within this specific project that would be approved today, there is no excavation that will be done? That's a separate project? This is more of bringing in material potentially or fixing the, doing the repairs to the levy?
Yes, I think that's what the basically these are, like to bring extra material and to have the compacted.
We're going to rip.
Yeah, okay.
Would you like to please come to the microphone?
Yeah. So I think there is certain depth, like two or four inches.
Yeah, so what the project is going to do is it's going to actually take rip into the levy and, but no sediment, no soils are going to be removed. It's basically so that the new soils coming in can lock in. So it's a ripping and then a watering and a compacting and then more fill, more watering, more compacting until we meet our four inches is what we're looking for so that can be re-crowned is what it is. And so there will be no soils, no soil spoils. We're not even moving. We're just literally ripping it up to lock in the new soils.
And the depth again of the ripping?
About two inches. We're saying anywhere two to six inches depending on the site.
Okay. And hence the CEQA exemption because of the depth of the ripping that's going on. And just a question, just kind of trying to remember some of the prior conversations, where is the other soils coming from that you are going to be utilizing to help rebuild?
And so where we, we just found out yesterday that from the contractor that hasn't been awarded to yet, that he is going to be using soils that have been removed from the high school.
Okay. And what, is there a state process that if something is found during this process, that there are rules and regulations of what processes to follow, best practices of what to follow if cultural artifacts or cultural resources are found?
We would definitely call in the tribe.
Okay.
You know, they were going to be the, they're, they're the people who know better about their artifacts than we do. So if we do find anything, this is why we were talking to them while CEQA exempts us from talking with them, they would know their resources better than we would. And so we do want to work with them regardless of having to consult or not. We do want to work with them. And so, you know, it's just a conversation that still needs to be had as to their resources, what they want to do with them, and we're okay with that.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Water Resources? Vice Chair Crandall?
And so, and so this is the award for that, for the, the group that you picked, the bid, right, Coleman? And they will be coming out with a plan that, that will be given back to you or do they just start working after they're given this bid? How does that work?
We've been talking to them a little, trying to get a little more information from them because of this process, because we usually just select the person and however they choose to get the work done is how we just roll with it. But we've been asked a lot more questions, so we've been trying to work with them to get those questions answered. And so they kind of tell us what they're doing, but they're not really too sure either. So they're going like, what is the best equipment to use? And so that kind of gets worked on. That's how we know that they're going to do the ripping with like a, a little machine thing that has like three little, to rip it. I'm not a contractor here, I don't really know the, the technical terms for it, but that is what we've gotten from them so far.
Can I ask you a favor? If you can please give us your name.
Oh, Linda Rosas Bill.
Thank you. Obviously, they know of the criteria of what not to exceed with the equipment that they use, then at that point, what kind of equipment they use is what they will tell you later on, like they know not to go 12 to 24 inches or anything like that.
Yeah, that would be unnecessary. And it's all part of the bid package.
Okay.
And so we've submitted the bid package to the tribe as well. Everything that we have documentation, we've given to the tribe so that they can see as well, you know, being totally transparent with everything that we have and going like, hey, this is a new process for us. We're not really too sure how this is supposed to work, but we're here to learn and grow with you. So, you know, we're going to try to learn together.
And I will assume that at this moment in time, within the area where the project is, that there is no previously identified cultural artifacts at this moment in time? It would be things that may be found if by chance that is the case?
Right, they would be inadverting finds because, yeah. And those, we have three sections that we're working on. And so we are unaware of anything that is currently there. So anything we find would be, you know, something that we moved, came up on an accident.
When was the last time this was done on the levies?
I want to say the last project was 2018.
Okay. And did they go through that process then as well? Was it similar?
I'm not 100% sure. It wasn't in the department, so I'm not sure what the process was at the time.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions for Supervisor Green?
Yeah. So it sounds like you guys proceeded under a CADDx, so there wasn't any special thing through community development for a grading permit or something like that that would have its own CEQA process baked in? That said, looking at the encroachment permit issued by the state to the Watershed Protection District, and that's on page 113 of 129 of that big, long document. Prior to performing work, permaTee must provide the department, the state, proof of notification and consultation, not just with Habemetal, but also Robinson, Scotch Valley Band, and Yokohdehi Windtoon Nation. Have there been notifications made at least to all those tribes?
Yep. We, so I have only been a part of this project for about a month and a half. And so when we met with Caltrans, they had stated that we needed to do that. And I asked about it, if it was done prior, and they had said no. So we went and we did send out those letters.
I'm a little uncomfortable with this, I'll be very clear. Number one, the window of work is closing rapidly mid-October. So even if we approve this today, the idea that they're going to go in there and do a really diligent job on short notice, assuming they're ready to activate tomorrow, it's not self-evident to me. Number two, this seems like a teachable moment where although it will probably cost us this season to conduct this repair, if we do show an abundance of caution, I'm all about that abundance of caution. This may be a fairly standard project and there may be such a limited amount of potential disturbance that we can take some confidence in the, in the initial CADDx finding. But I've heard, if I've heard that the CDD had some questions about it, or if the state itself has some questions about it, absolutely no need to rush into this. The fact that it is a project that has limited potential for disturbance, but has not been subject to that greater grading use permit or other, other type of CEQA proceedings, didn't give us a opportunity to consider the potential for disturbance, didn't allow the notice tribes to really deep dive into that and didn't allow, didn't give us the opportunity to reach an agreement with the tribes about exactly what type of tribal monitoring may be needed depending on the scope of work being, being conducted. So I know there's a need for speed and I know there's a need to keep our levies repaired and all that, but we also need to maintain our good relationships with our tribal nations and especially when they show an interest, especially when they respond and show an interest to do a deep dive into these issues. I think we should be very prudent and acknowledge those, those interests, if only to avoid some potential down the road if we don't do things right. I know there was a CADDx here in the city of Lakeport for a very simple cut along a sidewalk, and I had a question, where's, you know, should there be tribal monitoring, should there not? And, you know, I don't want to like burden the city with a comparison here, but I do think overall, I have heard more than once, between AB 52 and other processes, we do need to educate ourselves as a county and a watershed district to the level of consultation that is needed. And I think this is a condition where you have both a short timeline and you do have some questions about whether this particular CEQA finding is appropriate. You know, slowing, slowing the pace of this project, to me, would be appropriate, but it's in your district supervisor, so I'll kind of listen to you on that.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. So always looking for solutions, even coming from the tribal side as we move forward and do these projects. What I've heard today is there are funds for a tribal monitor to be on the project. What I would like to do is move forward with the project, you know, as we move forward. That's what our monitoring agreements are for. We're not looking for anyone else to know what we know as tribal nations in our area. I did hear you say there's only $2,000, it may be more than that. And I heard a little bit of a follow-up comment, there, there may be some other funds or an opportunity to look at different things if that comes up. My thought is, I think as diligence, that getting something in, in place on this project with, with Habemetal is really important, but it sounds like we have some. I even heard Robert, when you stood up, said, once the evaluation happens, and I'm looking at just some of the jobs, it says levy and slope and bankment repair and build up subgrade .3 miles. So they've got kind of the areas worked out. I think getting the agreement in place and then relying and working together on each other is the best way to move forward. I don't think we need to slow the project down. I think what we need to do is involve the tribe from the beginning. That's what helps the project move forward. Communication always needs to be improved. I heard from your comments, I heard that you're learning as the new resource director, having seven nations, even heard a gentleman here speak about the museum, 20,000 years, we were everywhere. So it don't matter if you're moving dirt from one place to the other, just having those eyes on site is the most important thing. I'm hoping we can come together on this one and use it as a teaching moment, but I'm prepared to move forward as long as we get a commitment that that agreement, monitoring agreement gets put in place and we can move on from there. Other issues might come up with different projects that were brought up here, but I think we can work together on that. And those, those are my thoughts. You can, both groups can let me know what you think about that, but I think having the, can't tell you the importance of monitoring agreements. We have all been through them as tribal nations, categorical exemptions, whether it's Caltrans, PG&E, other things, you say, listen, we're not trying to stop anything, but if we can be out there in the beginning and see something to help move the project forward, can happen because many a times we've not been on the project, then we get the call. And now we start the whole process over again, and that doesn't benefit anybody, doesn't benefit the community that needs this work done because we've heard it for years sitting here on the levy improvement projects. That's my suggestion today, and I hope we could walk away with that. But hearing your points loudly on communication, it's really important. It is important. And, you know, we try to respond as governments and as tribal nations, when we get these letters, it's important to us, we try and get back as soon as possible. Four tribes went out there, one have stepped up to do this because that's the area. Yokohdehi's reaching real far. I always have a problem with that, but, but anyway, that's another conversation. So as we move forward, that's my suggestion. We move forward, if we can do an agreement, I think that's the way to start, and then we'll all learn from this process. So that's a solution I would like to offer to the board, if it's amenable between the two parties here.
Let's, let's finish with any comments from the board. Any further comments?
There's one here.
Okay, please come on up.
They can sign the monitoring agreement as, as they move forward. Many of these small projects have come up. I don't know if everything goes in front of the board, but cultural monitoring should be a part of that. There should be a cost on each one of these as you're moving forward, and it sounds like there is.
Right. And, and that's exactly what we brought to consultation. Like I said, the initial, I guess, notice for some type of levy project, and this is what we asked for in consultation, just to better understand it and to get clarification, give me a list of all the levy projects that are incorporated under this categorical exemption or that needs to happen. Give me timelines and details of what's going to happen. Even here, we're talking about the levies that just were going to be scarred. That's not totally true because there's also, and you read it, that there's a slope deterioration, slope work that's also going to take on ground disturbance activities. So there's that part of it that's there. One of the things that I asked for, and a lot of people don't understand this, is that I asked for, how was this, or give me any kind of historical data on how these things were constructed. Usually, historically, they take, you know, the kind of the big arm, and they kind of pull everything back from the center. And then a lot of work that has happened throughout California, they find TCRs all in the levy when they start doing either a levy setback or a removal, sometimes even ancestral remains, because for some tribes, that's how they bury literally a long thing. So that's why I was asking, like, let me know exactly what that looks like, and I couldn't get it. And so any work that happens on that levy, I'm concerned, because if that was the method that was used here, which no one could provide to me, then you know what, I want to make sure that I have somebody out there. So initially, in our consultation, it went down one foot, or we were talking one foot, and then we ended up finding out there that we were gonna go down, no, I'm sorry, one inch, then we ended up finding that it's gonna go six inches, so half a foot down. And then this, like I said, the deterioration of the slope, the disturbance of that. So I just, you know, there's a lot of concerns that I have here, and like you're saying, I think, you know, we're just making sure that we have a monitor on site, making sure that there's foresight for when any time that there's anything that's found. We have an archaeologist, and archaeologist is the only one that can submit a DPR form to the state to make sure that there's, that this is registered. And then to make sure that whatever that reburial site that is, that that's registered with the state, that any kind of future work that happens, that that's gonna pop up on any, any other initial study. And so I just wanted to say also, in 2018, there was an initial study was for the project of levy maintenance that was contracted through Mr. Sealy that was there on Middle Creek. Tribal Cultural Resources, and mind you, SEQA had passed in 2014, you know, the AB 52. 2018, the initial study that happened in Middle Creek didn't involve or didn't assess cultural resources or tribal cultural resources in that 2018 study. So with that said also, is with this categorical exemption, the agency itself said that there were things missed in this exemption determination, and that they needed to review it and update it. So it doesn't have it currently of like what it is, where it's at. They're still reviewing that.
So I'm always like to be very clear or not. I asked you, and you said, "Yeah."
Yes.
Monitoring agreement is the most important thing, because there's a lot of unknowns at this point, so. I think what I've heard from at least one or more of the board members, we're ready to move forward, and we want to make sure we're doing that together.
Yeah, and we just, and I'm there, as far as for what we're concerned about, but just also making sure as far as the full process, is there an archaeologist that's gonna be a part of this process to do reburials? Those are the things that, none of that is a part of the mitigation. We just started, you know, consultation about this. We haven't even gotten to that yet. And so, you know, it seems like there's an issue of cost here. That's what's been thrown out. It's like, well, here, this is what the tribe has to, this is what we got for you. And it's like, I can't assess this because I don't know the details. You haven't given that to me. So like here today, it was just the scarfing. It wasn't the slope work that has to be done. So I just.
All right, so. Okay, you're not very clear either.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys want a monitoring agreement so we can, we're gonna start this project, or you don't.
Yeah, if we can set one up, that'd be great on that, on that part of it, so we'd have somebody that's out there.
This is what's here today on this one, you know, and I understand you've brought up other issues with other projects that may go on, or this categorical exemption, but today we're talking about this project, and that's what I'm trying to address. Okay.
Supervisor Green?
If I can just reinforce that, because I hear where they're going on this. Clearly, it would be better if you had more time to analyze it, but at the end of the day, regardless of the project, a simple project like this, or some huge thing that went through an initial study and mitigated, NAGDEC or a full-blown EIR. At the end of the day, there are what are called standard project conditions of approval, and tribal monitoring would be one of those, in anything, again, whether it was a simple thing that raised some areas of concern, or the initial sequo finding was somehow suspect, or just a larger project that we knew going in needed hands-on. That standard condition project of approval would be tribal monitoring on-site during construction, right? And so any of the doubts that you may have going into this, the ultimate fix at the end of the day, regardless of the type of project, that standard agreement would be, let's get some tribal monitoring out there. Is that correct? So other than where the money's gonna come from and all that, it sounds like there may be agreement through the parties, just do that in this case. And on that basis, if there is that kind of shared agreement, I don't know how we lock it in within the four corners of the contract before us, but if we can get assurances on that, then we can probably move forward, as long as we all understand that tribal monitor is the thing in this case, and we can't, we can't cure the defects of not having all the bells and whistles on your preliminary analysis, but if we do let this contract today, at least having a tribal monitor on-site would be agreeable. Okay.
Mike Chek-Randle?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we went through this before in another situation, not exactly the same, but when we had the situation with Lassarne Harbor, we ended up, I think it was a categorical exemption as well at the time, and then, but it was a totally different situation as we were doing a dredging project. And then we went around and found out that there was, it was an actual site, and so I think the planner, I don't remember the, I don't want to say the wrong name, yeah, Tracy had went back and found out that it was a site, and so going through it, we ended up doing the whole situation again for SEQA, and got through it, and there ended up being a, an actual artifact. And so one of the things about the levees, but just giving that example, but we were actually able to get the group, the tribes out there and talk with staff, and then not only that, Dr. Parker was there as well to talk about some of the, some of the practices. And so then going through these processes with the community, talking to them about these resources, tribal resources and whatnot, and so now here we are, almost there with that project. But then it was also mentioned about the levees, and I know that that was mentioned in Middle Creek Restoration, that back when they made those, of course, in the 20s or 30s or whatever, they pushed those levees that more than likely had artifacts in there. I think this one was built in, what, the 60s or 50s? But then, you know, there's been continuous maintenance on it, and so I was glad to hear the history on it and whatnot. I think with everything we've talked about, knowing now that when we move forward with anything that has to do with something in a tribal area, you know, because I know that with Robinson, they're going to defer to Habemetal in that situation. But anytime there is, we know that right off the get, we have to figure out these things right up front, so that we're not, we're not here at this, you know, this predicament now, if that makes any sense. But I don't fault Water Resources, because I know there's been a lot of turnover, there's been a lot of staff and things like that that's taken place. So I know that we're gonna get there. I feel like we can get there. I'm hoping that we can move forward today, and everyone can feel like they're being heard, and that they can, like the tribe can feel like they have a path forward and can actually be, you know, you know, I guess, what's the word I'm looking for? They can have what they need to make sure that whatever's found can be put to rest or identified, yeah.
Okay. Any further comments on this? So my struggle, if Fish and Wildlife came back with a different outcome, I think that this conversation would absolutely, there wouldn't even be a choice, because at that point, SEQA is initiated, within SEQA is AB 52. This is in addition to something that by law does not require consultation if it's exempt. We can have consultation, and it looks like that we are. I don't know if it's over. I know I heard from one party saying that they feel it's not over, but they're being told it's over. But unless there's a project that requires the sequo process to be fulfilled, it's not a requirement. And I may, I may offend some people with this, but history is history. Whatever we find that is historical, I'm just gonna leave it at that, should be respected in any way possible, no matter whose history it is that we're digging up. And there's potential to dig up different types of histories. And I think that no matter what it is that we potentially accidentally dig up, the same respect would be given to pause, let's reschedule and relook at what needs to happen with what was found. But if we start adding with, under SEQA exempt projects, cost to each project, when I know that we have limited resources for our water resources, which is direly in need to get these projects completed, to keep towns, to keep our waterways clean and safe from flooding, then we're gonna start limiting what can be done. And so I feel like we have laws in place that says, hey, we're gonna be able to pause here and be able to have another conversation when this occurs. But if we start initiating something that by law does not require us to initiate, I just feel like we're adding a level that now limits how much projects we can actually get done, that people are waiting for us to get done. So I think there's, I don't know, I just, to me, it's easy to say, yes, let's just throw money at it, but then we're begging for money on the other side, trying to figure out how it is that we can get things accomplished. And I have Water Resources who has approached this in the first place, saying it's SEQA exempt currently, and that there's nothing to show that there should be any issues, and if there is, there are state laws to follow, and at that point, the right folks will be called, including an archaeologist, in order to respect those findings. That's the way that I would like to move forward, because that, to me, is following the law instead of setting a new precedent where that's kind of the expected way to follow at later times. If we know 100% that something's there, there's already something different, but that's not the case. That's why I asked the question. So that's, that's just my comments. Oh, thank you. Wasn't even looking in that direction. Director Turner, I see your hand up, or now I see your hand up.
Thank you. I can't quite start my video, but hopefully this isn't like too much extra knowledge, since it sounds like your conversation is moving forward. But in the Community Development Department, we have instituted processes to make sure that we are not overlooking possible exceptions to categorical exemptions. The California Environmental Quality Act does have a number of possible categorical exemptions. However, there are five reasons why those categorical exemptions may not apply to any given project, and one of those is cultural resources. And so we, for all of our discretionary permits, not ministerial like building a house, but for discretionary permits, we send our requests for review as a courtesy out to the tribes, to give them the opportunity to reach out to us and say, "We have a reason to think that this does not qualify for that exemption due to what we know that's out there. We need a consultation," and then we'll talk to them. So I think that this, this one instance is probably an aberration. I know that we did not coordinate with Water Resources as we were improving our processes, but we'd be happy to, I'd be happy to meet with Director Apodacay in the future and just kind of walk him through what we're doing, so to make sure that no matter which department is pursuing a project, that we won't have a glitch or a gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. Want to make sure, it seems like Mr. Gary, you have something that you want to say. Please go ahead, and then I'd like to come back to the board.
No, I just wanted to apologize to Supervisor Simon. Sometimes, you know, I think just seeing the process, sometimes I kind of like want everything to kind of be, and so specifically, yeah, to this, you know, to have a monitor out there, that really is it, right? And so, you know, my apologies for, you know, kind of jumbling everything together, but in the, in the end, yeah, you know, this is gonna be ongoing, you know, levy maintenance is ongoing, you know, all of those things that are part of that space. And remind you, the tribes are the ones who determine what those TCRs are, you know, not the agency. And so when we're coming to the consultation table and talking about, yeah, this waterway is our TCR, we've always used this, then that is definitely something that, because it's not tangible, it's not on paper, and it's not registered, that doesn't mean that it's not significant. And so those are the things, but, you know, my apologies, like I said, I just want to make sure, you know, that, you know, when things are found, hey, we have a plan. We have a plan to make sure that, you know, how that's gonna get back, it's gonna get back legally, and it's gonna get back to where it's gonna be, you know, registered with the state. So when anything else happens in the future, we don't have to worry about it, right? It'll, it'll pop up. We know that it's there, and so my apologies.
No apology needed, and we're all, we're all learning together, the two processes that go together. One that was non-existent on our side, because that's the way it was, that's the way they wanted it to be, but now we're coming together and we're learning as we go. And my option came up from a conversation that they said they did have some funds in there for the tribal monitoring, is move from there, and, all right, let's bridge this gap now, and let's figure it out down the road. Eventually, we are gonna do work on all of these levees, and the tribes in that area will be able to record it from now on, and then we'll have that opportunity to really say, okay, yeah, yeah, we know what's there, we've been through that project with you, we're good to go, you know. So anyway, those, that's my thoughts. I didn't try and bring up anything that would start the thing over. There was an opportunity for us to work together that was presented by Water Resources, so I think it's a positive step forward, so.
Anything further from Water Resources?
So I would say like, based on like what we have, the information, like we tried our best, and in no way like we are trying to work, otherwise, like we do want to work with the tribe, even though we were exempt for this project, we did send out letter to all the tribes, had the opportunity to consult, like talk in person, provided all the documents we had, and also being in touch with the contractor, like how he gonna approach that work, even though it's these type of projects, because it will be like a five-day or seven-day, maybe a week or two-week kind of project, so it's not like everything has been lined up like day by day or hour by hour. But we are showing a commitment that we do want to work with the tribe and like have, if we find anything, follow a process which is in place. I mean, that's, that's all I think we could have done, so, yep.
Small project, good learning, you know, for this, for you on the first one here that you've done for Lake County, so.
Yeah.
You know, I think we have an opportunity to all learn a little bit, so.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Open it up for public comment. I see none coming from the chamber. We have Virginia Serenio.
Chairman, this is Tom Jordan, Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. I thought this agenda item was I, and I put my hand up to make sure that I was there. I have no comment on what you're discussing. I think you're all on the right track.
Thank you very much. I really got your name wrong. Next, we have Kyle Bill.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate, I think the conversation is really important. I just want to echo that, you know, I think that this is really important for us as a county, to really develop an internal policy or procedure that is followed. That way, when there is turnover, it's not a, it's not a process that, you know, you know, that it's outlined, because the reality, I think, is understanding the tribe's perspective of when we are uninformed and having to do things last minute, we're not as prepared to be able to do the things that are necessary for us as tribal sovereign, sovereign entities, but also culturally, when it comes to those artifacts. You know, and I think this just highlights something as simple as just having a plan. There's no opposition to what is being done, but just, just merely just wanting to be consulted on developing a plan to protect those artifacts if and when something is, is, you know, brought up. And so also, I think it's just, and I want to say this in a respectful way, but it's just very tone deaf, when we're being told that, you know, these agencies that have no knowledge of these areas historically are being put as the experts on what is of cultural value or not. And I think that that is not very, you know, that doesn't build relationships here locally. You know, I think that while it is, you know, there might be exemptions from law, is it a best practice? You know, that sometimes we can go above, you know, because we value the relationships, because we value each other, and especially the first inhabitants of this place, that we are experts when it comes to these areas that have been developed, will be developed, or be disrupted. And so valuing that perspective, valuing that knowledge, and engaging with those knowledge keepers is not only the right thing to do, but it's, it's what we should do as community members living here together. You know, and so I think it's important that we really look at this process, because it is a reoccurring theme, not just specifically with this, but as Supervisor Crandall had mentioned, there was something kind of similar. And so at some point, when do we come up with intentional, with intentions, a plan to remedy this, so that we feel heard, that we feel like people care as much? So I. So I appreciate the discussion, I hope that it continues and that there is an opportunity to work collectively together to find a remedy that respects our ancestors, that respects our inherent sovereign right to protect and to preserve our people. And so I just want to thank everyone and encourage more, more of this, and really looking into fine tuning a policy or an internal procedure. That way, anyone that comes in new understands that these are the steps that have to be taken. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no further hands up in the Zoom room and no movement in the chamber, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. I just wanted to get some clarification. At this moment in time, I know there was a proposal, and Supervisor Simon, I'm going to use your proposal, of adding monitoring, meaning that during the work being performed on the levy, that a monitor is actively there? Or are you talking about using the funds for if there is a need to contact the tribe if something is found? I understood it as monitoring is there, is that correct?
Monitoring agreement would be, because they're going to roll out their project, they have it kind of lined out, there's going to be more specifics later when there's actually disturbance that's going on, not all of it. When they're actually bringing in and laying road base, it isn't going to do anything, you're just compacting, you're taking on a different conversation, each one of these projects, which are kind of laid out there, when we know there's going to be ground disturbance, it can be worked out between the tribe and the contractor and Water Resources. So the whole, they'll make the decision on all of that stuff as the project comes out and it gets ready to get started, but I kind of laid out where I thought the most important positions were going to be, the point three miles, and it's all laid out in here, I don't know all of it, I haven't walked the project, but as the construction is getting ready to go, those will be the times, hey, you got to have a monitor this day. We're going to be working for four hours or six hours or eight hours on this, this portion of it, and that's, that's how it works. So that was my thought, there are some funds in there to get that started, maybe enough, may not be enough, but let's start with that and we'll go from there. So that's my thought.
Okay.
So I don't know, am I very clear on that? That's, that's.
I think they all agree to that.
Every project is different, but, you know, that's, that's how we do.
And just a statement to that, we did state that in there, that we have monitored agreement, that we just wanted to make sure that when ground disturbance occurred, that we just had a monitor there to protect possible inadvertent.
So I've looked at these before, so when I looked at it, it's very clear for me, I'm like, okay, because we've all been out on these, you know, to say, okay, this is how we're going to do it. So that's how I looked at it, so that, that's, the monitoring agreement will cover that, we can't control it, we're not going to go to these construction meetings, it'll be Water Resources, the contractor, and the tribe who go through that stuff unless you're called to a meeting on the project or something. It's pretty simple. For me, it's pretty simple, I apologize, just putting it out there.
No, I got that, I appreciate that clarification. I just will say that I, again, same thing as I stated, we do have laws to try and respect what is accidentally found, and so adding a cost that is not necessarily having to be borne by the department, I'm not going to agree with that at this moment in time.
All right.
There commonly is an amount that's applied to that, though. You're talking about adding more costs, because I don't think.
No, 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 I'm talking about adding the cost of monitoring to something that is SEQA exempt, that doesn't require it. Obviously, there's a cost if something is found, and having to deal with inviting the tribes back in and saying, hey, if something has been found, let's talk about what to do with it, where it goes, but monitoring for something that is.
Proceed as exempt, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the monitoring.
Okay.
It needs to happen.
We also, Supervisor Pisca and myself have been meeting with tribes, and we're working on something that's going to help with this process in general and internal department types of things as well. We've identified that that's an issue, heard loud and clear before, was glad to hear it mentioned again today. I won't go into further details, but just know that we have something that we're working on that will help with this process. So, yeah, just wanted to mention that, and I don't know if there's anything else, but go ahead.
Before you make an action, I just, I want to thank you, Robert, for spending your entire day here and having this conversation with us, because this is how we all get better. And I know that you probably had other things to do, but this was, from my perspective, a solid investment of yours.
Yeah, I think he's got to go to the LAPEC meeting, but, okay. But, but yeah, a lot of what I learned is from, from Robert Gary, and I do know, I've worked with Linda as well, so I know she's privy to a lot of this, and she's, as soon as I heard she was doing this project, I've been waiting on her for quite some time, so I was like, okay. So, but here we are, here we are, we're going to be able to build on this. I don't know if I need to add anything to the motion or anything, or, you mentioned it earlier.
I think we've given consensus to staff to continue to engage in consultation and decide on how the monitoring will occur, the timeline and things like that. I think there's been consensus divided by the board, and they'll hash out those details.
Okay. All right, so with that, I'll go ahead and, sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, approve the award bid number 25-0693 for 2024 levy patrol road gravel repair project, Upper Lake, California, between Lake County Watershed Protection District and Coleman Construction LLC, in the amount of $163,812.64, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. And with additions, or with, no?
Nope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.